I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to the Town Council Work Session on Monday, June 4, 2018. First on the agenda is a budget amendment to create a separate department budget for community development to finance director. PJ.
So as we previously reviewed in my budget presentation for the fiscal year 19 proposed budget, we did not create a separate department for community development. So what we were planning to do is come back to council with a request to use the encumbered funds that we've been carrying forward to create the department. So what we would do is release off $41,500 from the purchase order that we've been carrying all of the funds on to create this department in the fiscal year 19 budget. I think so we kind of reviewed during the budget presentation number one for the general fund, and now we're just coming back to the four councils approvals to create the department using this one.
Anybody have any questions? Jane, anybody?
Yeah, another question I have. Is this $87,000, is that in the general fund or is that a separate?
General fund.
It's in the general fund.
Yes.
I think rather than the 1.1 we got in there.
Well, no, this was, this is, the 1.1 is, was not encumbered funds. This had already been encumbered separately.
First one, Max, first one.
Yeah.
Yes, oh yes, it is.
Anyone else?
Would this be an annual budget item then for $41,000?
Well, we would start budgeting, it would go through our normal budget process as we move forward. So we set aside $87,000 and create a current year budget of $41,500 and would the expectation be if we create that as a separate budget item that we continually fund that at around, around about $41,000? My guess, please you may be better one to ask.
Joe?
Yeah, the main focus is that, you know, we've been doing community development on a contract basis on a PO with, with Ms. Hart. Last year, we made a decision, council made a decision to bring Ms. Hart on as an employee. So basically what this does is allow us to create that department, number one, where we can track expenses years out, where we can see where our money's being spent. See, right now on a PO, we just don't really have any tracking abilities.
So we're spending the money now?
We're spending the money now. What we're trying to do is, is include it in our budget as a department where we can start tracking different line items such as marketing and other avenues. Right now, it's just some money being spent.
Okay, makes sense.
Jane?
Joe, in regards to, you say a new, new department, so you're going to split our time up between, see, that's the community development and the tourism.
Yes, moving forward.
But, well, only reason, I don't have a problem doing it, I just don't want one to overtake the other and we start adding money and each one, both of them become bigger and bigger and bigger.
Joe?
It's a, it's a premise that community development includes tourism as part of, there are not two separate entities in a sense, but it's included as part of the community development.
What's this money to be used for? Budget. Understand? Budget. I mean, this is in addition to the...
No, this is not in addition to what we approved in the budget. This is just moving money around to make it. Right, PJ?
This, well, this is a new department. It is in addition to the proposed budget.
Right, but we, we discussed that during the budget process.
Correct.
It's not additional funds. So the money is going to be spent on the breakdown of professional services, printing, advertising, postal services. So that's the proposed line items for the budget?
That is correct. And I believe you can probably give better details to what each line item is if you have particular questions.
Well, in other words, we have two years' worth of budget items.
Exactly.
This one and next year.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
If you say this comes from money that we put aside every year, I think, what do we, budget, $50,000 a year?
Something along those lines up until we appropriate your board.
Right, and then we put her into the tail and then we need to give her a budget, her own budget money. I got you. Anybody else? Okay, Joe. Off-street parking requirements on the southern part of Chester Street. Jeremy? Please, sir.
So my memo there includes most of the information about my involvement with this. To summarize, Mr. Downs, the owner of the Virginia Beer Beer Museum, had a, came in, spoke with the town attorney, and then came in and applied for a fence permit to fence off his property behind the beer museum, which is a private parking area. And he also wanted to gate that off, restricting access to it during, most of the time during the day. Per the town code, he cannot eliminate his parking because he doesn't qualify for the same exemption that's built into the town code for properties on East Main Street. Essentially, that says that the properties on East Main Street do not have to comply with the off-street parking requirements. There is another exemption, 175, 127, for existing properties, which says they do not have to meet the quantity requirements, but they can't, they can't eliminate the parking that they already have. And so that permit was denied, and Mr. Downs later came back in and amended the application and said that he was going to keep the rear parking area open. He just wanted to fence his property, but he would still keep it available for parking. So at that time, the permit was approved, and Mr. Downs also said that, he required what the, his options were about trying to get the town code amended, so he would qualify for the same parking exemption that the other properties are on East Main Street. So I explained to him, there's really three options you have. One, you could submit an application, there's a four and other application fees. That's a process where citizens can initiate on their own initiative request for a code amendment, that would go to the planning commission of council. And then the other option would be for council to champion the request, infer to the planning commission for consideration, and then it would bounce back to council after the planning commission has reviewed it and given a recommendation. And then the third option would be have it initiated by the commission of council.
If I have any questions?
So, just to clarify then, he kept, he put a fence around the property, but left it open to continually park in the fenced area because of the parking requirements? Is that correct or am I misunderstanding?
Right, there was a, his, his parking lot had access off of a Peyton Street parking lot, and so that entrance...
So I saw the fence.
Had to be kept open, and so if you go out there now, you'll see an opening there, which still provides access to his rear parking.
Wait, but that's just his parking, that's just clearly, you know, that's his parking area?
It's a private parking area.
How many spaces in that parking, we never did ask, but do you remember?
Well, they've never been stripped off.
How many are required?
The beer museum, about seven, based on the square footage. He's got maybe seven or eight in the back, and then he has at least part of the ones on the side of the building, which look like they're public parking, but his property line actually comes into those parking spaces.
I went down there today, and there was no sign saying there's any parking inside the perimeter. And second thing I noticed was there's a, I don't know how many picnic tables blocking that entrance, so you couldn't get a car in there anyway. Is that, is that the way it's supposed to be?
No, I do have a concern about that since the fence has gone up. I know, I don't think he's finished the fence, but he's got, per my condition, he's, he has to keep that open and available for use as parking, so if he's got it blocked off of picnic tables, that's not going to work.
I don't know how you can get a car in and out of there anyways, the way it is.
Of course.
Yeah.
And the picnic tables are covered in...
But if you put in seven cars, and there are six cars, that's not happening. Unless you want to get trash.
Anybody else? Jane?
Well, I have a problem with this because Joe, Joe Doe comes in next week, and he wants to tell me change. He wants to change our code, and he goes from, you, you get to pay us the $400 or whatever it is, and then he comes back to us. And I think this is the way this should be handled, that this thing of having an ordinance and we don't pursue it or follow it, that we just will not have the ordinance. And it would be different if we, as the councilman, wants to change something individually, not for anybody in particular, but something that rests aside, aside ordinance we had that we could not pursue and have it changed so that pre-existing buildings would, would be exempt from all the parking requirements. Now, to me, that's a different story because some is going to affect everybody from lawyers. This is only going to affect one individual, whatever we do in this case. And I feel that if he wants to make a change, wants us to make a change, and follow the procedure that we have on the books, and it applies, pays the $400, and then he comes to us, and then we make the decision whether we want to send it to the planning. That's the way I look at it.
I agree with Mr. Teal exactly that, but the other problem I have is that we just said two weeks ago, no, we wanted to, we wanted this issue returned to you. That meant we were not going to champion it. So that meant only left him one option, to apply with a $400 fee. So I'm confused why it's even back here again tonight.
But we're going to have to take a vote whether you want to put, pursue it to the planning or...
Well, I'm just laying the facts out right here. We denied it two weeks ago, and he went to Jeremy, so his only option then was an application.
But he already cleared all these hurdles now, right? Like, so he can't send it, he can't send it back to planning now, I mean, he's got his permit, right?
No, this is business...
This is Chester Street parking. The fence is already there.
No, we're talking about the parking regulations.
He wants that changed.
Yes, to do away with his portion, so that he could actually fence off, I don't know, maybe he wants to fence off the entire, have a walkway, put picnic tables all over his lot.
Correct.
And have everybody park in the town parking lot, which...
That's the something confusing about that area, picnic tables all over that lot.
Which, by the way, they may be parking in the town parking lot anyway, and they're, and they're, they're entitled, but he has to maintain his, whatever his parking requirements are, so.
Yeah, but he's not maintaining if you've got picnic tables.
But anyway, but anyway, council turned it down, moved it to the planning, brought it back to work session, now council needs to... Doug, help me out here a little bit, we need to make sure, we don't want this apparently going back to planning unless he pays through his own process, that's the process. Do we need to take it any further or...
If you want him to go, if you want him to follow that process, you don't want him to do anything further under...
Bill, you don't want to champion it? Jane?
No.
Jake? Bill? Or, sorry, Gary?
Chris.
Chris? Jeremy, I guess we don't want to champion it as a council, so you'll have to, if he wants to take that course.
I will inform him.
Now, that application he'll put in for $100, and it immediately goes to planning, it does not come to council until after planning, correct?
That is the normal process, yes.
Yes, it does not come to council until after planning. Okay, thank you. All right, discussion of addressing blighted and derelict structures in the town. Jake, please do not just, if you know of a blighted building, just say A, B, C, don't name any blighted buildings, you don't want to give anybody the impression that we're... Are you signaling out targeting? Yes, so any reference will be made, be A, B, C, because we all know where they're at.
What if we use up the alphabet?
Well, you know, that's possible. We go to one, two, three, okay? You did catch that, didn't you, Mike? All right, let us know where we start, alpha to omega on this. I mean, we, we're in new water, nobody knows anything about blighted derelict buildings, how we're going to proceed, what we need to do first, we need to pick the property, we need money. Help us out, Doug.
Well, beginning July 1, the new town charter goes into effect, and we, as a town, have the same authority as any other city, town, or county in the Commonwealth to deal with blighted...
Can you speak up a little bit, Doug?
Okay, as of July 1, the new town charter goes into effect, and we have the same powers granted to any other city, town, or county in the state to deal with blighted or derelict buildings, structures.
That's in the state?
In the state.
Okay.
And, and that includes special legislation that is granted to any other locality. And what I've done is I went through the code, and what you have in your junior cover sheet are all of the significant legislation that deals with blighted or derelict structures. And I decided to also look at Colt Pepper and Winchester, because they seem to be doing a pretty good job of trying to clean up their communities. And what I found was Winchester has already in the ordinances adopted virtually all the powers that have been granted on cities. And so since they've been doing a pretty good job of ongoing cleaning up blighted and derelict structures, one thing I would think that might be worthwhile is for town staff to meet with Winchester city staff and just find out what does work well for them and what doesn't, and maybe make a report back there.
My understanding is July 1, we're going to be able to do what Winchester's been doing for years, getting rid of these blighted buildings.
Jack?
Mostly, what I was interpreting, what you said in your correspondence to us, though, it's, it's not just a building that looks poor, or looks bad, badly, of course, bad word.
Blighted.
Blighted, yeah. Looks blighted, it has to be a vacant building as well, something that's sitting there.
Vacant or structurally unsafe?
Unsafe, yeah, structure unsafe, that's right. Okay, so it can't, it can't just be a blighted building?
It can't just be isolated.
Correct.
Can you hold that thought? Who would determine if it's un...
Right.
Who would determine if it's unsafe?
It could be the building inspector, it could be an engineer, we do have a town engineer, somebody like that, somebody who's actually qualified to make a determination that a building, for instance, is not safe or it's unhealthy to somebody else.
In Winchester's workings to take care of these, do they have the rental code inspections enforced to...
Yes.
To enforce that?
Mm-hmm. But I thought, just talking to them, besides just the property maintenance code and rental inspection, find out what else they do. My understanding is they have like a formal or informal committee where they examine each individual property that they think might be a problem, and they address each individual property individually, and, because there's no one size fits all.
Exactly, and let me ask council this, does anybody have any heartburn about Doug and his staff meeting with Winchester staff to, to get firsthand, if I have a problem with it?
So I've, I've, having done their chamber leadership program there, that's actually part of their program, taking you through the areas where they've spent time, invested in improving some of their, their communities, some of the, some aspects of the city of Winchester. And I think it's, I think that they have a very good program. They, they got it nailed down as far as the process goes, at least it seemed, they have it nailed down as far as the process goes, even the enforcement aspect of it, and how they've kind of blended that position with the police department there as well. So I would definitely be in favor of looking at that.
Doug, it would be you and Jeremy? It'd be you and Jeremy?
Yeah.
And Joe?
Joe?
You three?
Well, I have a problem. Going back to the city of Winchester, because I did some work over on some of those buildings, but it was working, like engineering firm. But the difference between Winchester City and us, they have their own inspectors, they have their own whatever, you know, that we don't have. And it makes it a little simpler when you've got somebody under the auspice to make a decision on a building, or whether it's livable or inhabitable or whatever. But I think, as I recall, the buildings that we did, I helped on, through, through the engineering firm, always went through the, they don't call it the EDA, they call it the IDA.
IDA.
IDA, industrial development. And Jim Deskins was the person that, that I was working with him and going over and making sure things were being done properly. So I don't know, does that, how is that going to fit in to us, you know, since we don't have that authority, because we don't have a inspector, we don't have things that they've already got in their own system. And the second question, I know we've been dealing with Colt Pepper on the blighted buildings, I don't see how they could do anything that, that, that we couldn't have done before, and now we're saying that we've got to do something different. Colt Pepper's just a town like we, so I don't understand that...
Jane, remember, we just got permission from the governor that he didn't pick up...
Oh, no, no, I know that, but what I'm saying is, I know they passed the rental and they passed the other portion of it, and I guess they're using that and, and not the actual code that we have now, because it gives us the right to do certain things that they can't do.
That's correct.
What about Clifton Fords, and there's another one you mentioned.
Yeah, they, they do a vacant property registration program and a tax abatement. In other words, if you, if a property owner renovates a blighted property, the cost of renovating, they get a tax abatement for that. So there's a tax incentive for renovating your property. And Winchester has that program too.
Yeah.
Because they're a city. And we have that power now too.
Yeah, no, I don't get it wrong, I like to, I just want the simplest way that we can do this without creating a monster.
Right.
Because, you know, we're not here to, at a new department, we're not here to do this. I just want to make sure that if we can do anything, that we can go ahead and get something accomplished the simplest way of making sure that somebody is repairing or doing what they need to do with these blighted buildings.
Right.
And that's, that's, I want something fairly simple, we can get that.
Yeah, and that's one reason I wanted to meet with a locality that's been successful and find out from horses now what works and what doesn't.
If it doesn't work, yeah, we don't want to do the doesn't work.
Yeah, exactly.
Gary, you got a question?
I'll just add to what Councilman Teal was saying. I would check, Doug, if, ask the building official here in Warren County, if, if he would allow us to appoint a third-party inspector for these inspections on these properties. And I am almost ninety-some percent sure that he would have the authority to be able to do that for us, so it wouldn't put a burden on his...
Are you saying that if, if we had a building, we want inspected to borrow an inspector?
Well, no.
No.
He could give a list of third-party inspections.
Or hire a contractor.
And they could come in and do that for us. I mean, that would help, you know, have...
But would that give us, hire a new, us as a locality, their approval to do something if their third-party inspector comes in and says, yeah, you got to do this?
We don't know yet, that's, that's a question to be answered. Bill?
I thought we'd used the...
You have that authority, I haven't checked in a while, but there used to be a...
I thought we'd been using the county.
Yeah.
Is that no longer available for us?
No, nobody said it's unavailable. This is, this is kind of our party, we want to have our players, and we don't want to be intrusive into the, into the county inspections. That's why Gary was talking about a third-party inspector. But Doug, I think that's a great idea. You got any other information other than what you sent us the other day? Joe, do you have anything to add? Anybody got any more questions?
Well, we want to crawl, we want to crawl before we run.
Absolutely.
Before we run.
Well, we want to do it right.
If that's as simple as we can make it.
Yep.
Let's crawl first and get, get a good understanding before we're going.
Get some understanding of what, what works in other localities and what doesn't, rather than us try to read them through.
We've already been crawled. I like the idea, I'd like to get more information on the committee, because I think that would be an excellent way to be objective and not...
What committee?
To be a committee of, that are evaluating buildings, if there's one of concern, and not just...
Oh, oh, I got, okay, I understand that.
Not just, not town council people.
Right, well, we would have our point, somebody at that, at that juncture if that's where we need to go.
Yeah, but I would like, I would like more information about that, if, if that's how other municipalities do it. I don't want to be the one doing it.
No, we shouldn't be, yeah, that's why we have people that volunteer to help us out. Chris, do you have anything to add? Any other type of information that, and he may bring us an abundance of information coming back from Winchester City.
When are you going to Winchester?
Yeah, I haven't arranged anything with them, but soon as Eric and I wanted to go with you.
Well, I would object a little bit to that, let's let Doug and Joe and Jeremy go do theirs. If you want to meet with private people, that's quite all right, but we don't want to create a meeting with the council, because we're only in their infancy, if you understand?
Trying. If you go by yourself, it's not a public meeting.
We're sending staff, we're not sending upper level, we're sending staff, because it's going to be at a staff level. They're going to meet with staff, and they're going to be staff, so that's why I would have to object with the council.
Just Gary.
Now, at some point in time, once they meet, it may be that they may come here and kind of talk to us if needed. Let's let Gary take care of it, do the first steps. Okay? Gary, you good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Joe, we're going to let y'all take care of it on staff level for the time being, and find out about this committee and find out about the other concerns, third-party inspector. Anybody else have anything else?
Can we hold that process, particularly?
Yeah.
Not at this point.
Well, Doug, thank you for everything you've done so far. Continue the journey.
I did want to say, Doug, I liked your summary, your bullets of the additional, very easy to understand, straight to the point, it's good.
Simplicity.
Trying to convince you down.
He was standing there with a sledgehammer when he said simplicity. All right, having said that, council discussion goals, anybody got anything? Jane, since you've done...
We'll pass these letters out, and I'll explain, that's probably good enough, everybody there. You get one, Doug?
I can share it once you got another one. Thank you.
I got a call from General Hobgood, and most of you know that he was the commandant of the RMA for years. And since his retirement, he has gone and tried to get the Floyd Center back on his feet again. He was telling me that there's a possibility that when they appointed somebody to run it, it just went further downhill than it was before. So in the letter, and I told him to send me a letter and I'd bring it up at the council meeting and see what the council wanted to do. But anyway, just of it, they're putting on the Fourth of July fireworks up at the North Virginia Floyd Center, and he's already gone to the county, and he pretty much told me that Doug said that they would go ahead and fund $2,500, and he wanted to know if we would even consider $2,500 to help them to put on the program this year, due to the fact that they don't have the funds to do it themselves. They've already got the schedule, but the way he talked, they don't really have the funds to, to do a whole lot with it. And I told him I'd bring it to the council meeting and work session, if you gentlemen would want to entertain that for a meeting, I'd like to be, see a place on the agenda. I've thought about this... I've thought about this a little bit, and I know that we've been talking about not helping people or whatever in regards to these type of issues. And, you know, I have big emotions, and I'm sure the rest of you guys probably do too.
What's their budget, Gene? Is it state, federal?
It's, well, I think it's donations, that you do get some funding, I think, from the state. I'm not sure, I can't answer that, because I didn't go that far with General Hobgood. I told him I would bring the letter, if you sent it to me, and ask you guys if you all would be, if they wanted to entertain it as a possibility, share the cause. And I told him, I know we wouldn't consider that the county didn't put up fifty percent of it as well. But it's a five thousand dollar cost to do that four-H center on the Fourth of July, and they were asking for twenty-five hundred dollars from the county and twenty-five hundred dollars from the town. And again, I know, again, we don't, you know, we talk about all this thing, but...
Well, Gene, you know, we talked about having town fireworks, and it kind of got shot down, because nobody wanted to spend money. I don't know how the taxpayers are going to proceed blowing up twenty-five hundred dollars of their tax money, because I have no idea where the money would even come from anyway. I mean, what, what budget would it come out of, or?
County has more money. They should give more than fifty percent.
I know that we have a lot of citizens that pack that place in the summer for their fireworks, without a doubt. I know there's a band up there, I know they don't have the swimming pool this year, so they have a lot more financial woes than twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, they're closed now until weekends.
They're only doing the very minimal things they can do at this point.
Probably run around tables, Gene?
Well, you know, look, I'd like to continue with a little bit. I don't know how much money we have in the council thing. Yeah, I just don't know.
Already found out, what's it was, BJ? Zero left in council?
Not much.
Yeah.
I'm talking about for us to go to the VML and talk about that.
For a team that's pretty well gone.
Oh, I was calling.
Yeah.
There's not much left, we've got a new table, chairs, whatever.
So since it's before our new budget goes into effect, we could...
There's not anything, not much left in council's budget, there may be somewhere else I can go.
Well, the only reason I'm saying is, I have no intention of going to the VML this year, and it usually costs us about that amount of money to send someone to the VML conference, because of the cost of food, the lodging, the whole thing.
Oh, you're speaking fiscal year nineteen, I apologize. I thought we were talking about fiscal year eighteen.
We worked on that, too.
Yeah.
But they need the money now.
Now.
Well, I don't know what they need, he didn't say, he just said, we want to know if we would even consider, you know, and I'm like you, Bill, and I agree with you on the concern, I'm not trying to say it so long. I did tell him I'd bring it to the council, and if the council wanted to, had any ink with it, trying to find anybody to help that or not. It's been going on now for twenty years.
Fireworks?
Yeah. I can roll right away.
Yeah, they set vendors, and vendors spend so much money to sit there and...
So, I mean, what do you guys, I mean, I missed asking the question, do you want to entertain something, or just to write Mr. Hobgood and say, sorry, that we just found we can't do it?
I'm still of the same opinion of, feel like, feel like I'm going to be a broken record, I don't have any criteria for this, this kind of thing, because, yes, I mean, I want to give the money, but I want to give the next person money, and I want to give the next group money, and I just don't know how to, I don't know how to judge the worthiness of a project or a mask without any particular criteria, given the fact that there aren't any funds available for it, and I don't know where to pull it from. I think I would say that I would probably pass this time on this one.
Bill?
Well, that brings up the bigger question I had, because I knew this was coming. We need a system or an application process for requests like this by the public. The application would have a deadline date well before the budget deadline and an approval process. So a record falls to our town manager. So I'm putting it on record right now that any taxpayer dollars request would require an application and a recent budget or audit of that facility. It's my understanding other localities have application processes in place, so we do have capability, and that would also be a line budget item. So we really need to take a strong look at how to apply this process.
Daniel, I, actually, from the last work session, I took that, I think it was when Jake mentioned it, about the criteria and that, so I started working on it already, and what I did was I pulled what Warren County's doing, and I am starting to work on that, so.
Gary?
Oh, well, you know, a lot of our citizens go to this event, and to be honest with you, it probably is not going to happen unless we do help out. So I'm going to say yes.
We're going to take the work session, okay? Chris?
Not for twenty-five hundred. So, yes, but you still need to find yes. I would say yes to less than twenty-five hundred.
All right, I guess we need to take it to the work session. Make it official. And then vote on it, Doug? Bring it back to work, then we have to vote on it, the staff has to find the money somewhere if it's approved? Okay? Anybody else? Jake?
I have a few things. First off, Joe, thanks for the summary yesterday on all the activities around the town. That was an incredible amount of water. Actually, I was kind of surprised that we didn't have a little bit more issues to respond to, but it seems like your team did a really good job responding and being in front of everything, so.
And they did an excellent job.
Yeah, it's a nice summary. Some great figures on what's up from oil around the town, on what's going on with our flooding. And then I just had a couple of questions. I noticed in one of your weekly reports, you started the train-to-train-to-program. Maybe a couple of months from now, would it be possible to have one of your department heads talk about that? Or, I don't know what the appropriate timeframe is, but talk about how that's going, what they're learning from it, you know, how that's, might help them in incorporating and learning how to do evaluations better, and that kind of thing. I would love to hear from them, what kind of feedback they're getting from it. I said a couple of months, but you can determine whatever you think's appropriate for that. And then, lastly, it's kind of random, I know that EDA put out the press release on the afternoon, but I don't know who the right person asked the question to, but do we have any updates on when there's going to be...
Coming soon.
Anything? What is coming soon? Is it brick code today?
Rendering, the rendering, and paperwork's been done, and they're waiting on the new renderings, and she'll meet with council to go over this.
Jeremy has another thing?
Oh, Jeremy too, yeah, he's got it.
Well, I did meet with the EDA and mode development last week. They're still in their early stages, I think, from getting an actual plan that they can get a construction with, so they're still evaluating different options with the building, but they met with me and just kind of presented off some of the things they're thinking about, and said they might have to come forward and speak to some things of council related to parking and other aspects of the design, so.
It's coming together.
I think it's coming together, but they have ways before they actually have, I think, have engineered plans that are ready to go.
So a ways is like another six months of the year?
They didn't give me a timeframe.
Just feels weird, because, you know, we rush to get that thing done, and if you look at our dated timeline on that as a project, you know, we had conversations about this and moving pretty fast from September of last year, or a few months out from September.
Studying periods kind of put the lag on it, because they were getting kind of...
Oh, well, one of the things I wanted to pursue was speaking with Ms. Duncan, see if they could use part of the property in the back.
So they're continually evaluating different options for a final project on this? Okay. I'm just curious, because when we, we sell something pretty cheap or can move really fast, to have a project come to fruition, I guess, just for me, I'm kind of surprised that it's a year later.
Actually, the leasing probably took six weeks, a good six weeks, talking with Ms. McDonald, them putting together the lease for them to lease it from us, and there was a lot of back and forth, and it could have been two months, but they took almost five months to study.
No, I get that, but, you know, we sold the police department, and that didn't move anywhere. And we made a big deal about that, it didn't move anywhere, and that was a big for sale sign-on for it. So, you know, it just, I haven't been very, I haven't had really positive thoughts about ourselves, and then nothing happens with it.
Sure, yeah, sometimes it just seems like it takes a long time, but I guess they want to do it right, and we want them to do it right. We don't want to turn over undership until...
I want it done.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right, anyone else? Bill?
After the rains, I drove everywhere I could go during the rain. I know the mayor was there, because I saw him a couple of times. It appears to me that our rain and rainy seasons and road closings and flooding of the Happy Creek, some kind of cleaning has happened in the past in these trees, and I know you did it, Gene, because you and I have talked about it before, and I remember you doing it. We used to go along the creek beds and remove all the schumak and blockage and whatever that causes the rise. It looks like to me that we need to place it on some kind of schedule, and whatever applications or deadlines are required by federal and state agencies, and their paperwork should be accomplished in advance. And I know previously that some paperwork got left on a desk, or somebody miscued it, and it didn't happen. I'd like for us to be proactive in this matter and, and figure out, because this is like an annual thing, it's not like it's, you know, once every hundred years. We know it's going to happen, and if you don't clean the schumak out and all the debris on some kind of schedule, it's going to happen again, so.
Bill, I don't, and I remember when the town, somebody used to go down into the creeks and...
I did it for years.
But for some reason, it, it got stopped because of, I don't know, DEQ or EPA, whoever...
I didn't mention DEQ, but that's probably where it's at. But there is a process that you can go through to get that accomplished, and if it's, it has to be on whatever the paperwork requirement, I don't know, I don't know what the process is.
I guess this is something that, if you want to turn it over to staff for them to evaluate, I don't know, Gene, back when y'all were clearing it, people were worried because the erosion was coming in, because you were cutting all the, what slowed the water down from erosion, or what, I don't know, I don't remember at all, but...
I cleared it every year down at Eight Street Bridge, all that debris.
I think you're talking about the whole creek.
Well, I...
I'm talking about the major blockage areas. You've got to protect your downtown area.
I used to do it every year.
Joe, if you want to get with the staff at the next meeting or whatever, and see what...
I'll take care of it.
Whatever you can come up with, plan or something.
I'll put it on my project list.
I know the county wasn't on the other side of the Eight Street Bridge down through the park, and they just cleared it all out, there's nothing.
Well, it's going to take more than just clearing the trash away from this bank, you've got to clean the creek bed.
Yeah, you've got to see it.
If you look at Eight Street down there, they, the erosion has taken it to, to, to further east, that's washed out at least thirty feet of it, because when it comes around that bend down there, it's, it's got a pile, probably almost half as high as this river.
They're running up there.
It just goes around like this, and just...
The erosion is eliminated with riprap, so, you know, there might be some considerations there.
All right, Joe, see what you come up with. Anybody else? This meeting's adjourned.